Yeah. Obviously, a visitor. Oh, is everybody gonna be introduced, or do we assume we know each other?
We can do a quick. We can, we can do a quick. So, all right, so we're gonna start this. So six, let's start the meeting. Call to order. Uh, we currently do not have a quorum, because we only have two planning board members here. Uh, but we can continue. Um. To discuss them. Uh, the items on the agenda. Um. I did. The public. Current priority was not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to bring up that's not on the agenda? And really, the only thing on the agenda is the draft zoning code for data centers. So is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up at the moment? Other than being introduced to people? Okay, having said that. Uh, oh, there's Chris. Well, we still don't have a quorum, because there's three of us here now. Our values members. We're now. We're now the three planning board members here. Yes. Uh, but we still don't have a quorum. We need one more. Um. So, uh. I was gonna talk a little bit about what we're gonna do tonight, and, and maybe we can introduce, uh, people in a second. Um. This is a meeting of the zoning advisory group, so the intent would be to, uh, have zoning advisory group members, uh, provide feedback. On this draft, uh, zoning. Update for, uh. Data centers. The rest of the process, so what's, what's gonna happen through this is that once we sort of decide that this is the draft we want to use. Um, or, you know, that we have a draft that we want to use, that we want to recommend to the town board. Um. But it would. The planning board would have to vote on it to say, yes, this is what we want to recommend to the town board. Um, and then. Um. The town board, before adopting it, would of course have to have a public hearing, right? So there would be a public hearing, uh, at the town board level. And then the town board could vote on what to adopt, based on the feedback from the public hearing. Given the feedback we've had on this one so far, I'm actually inclined to maybe have a public hearing. Is to have the planning board have a public hearing. Um, on this. Um, which we can't do tonight, because it hasn't been announced, and we don't have a quorum, so, but. Um, so I'm kind of thinking, but let's, let's talk through this, but one of the things I'd like to get out of tonight is that we think that we should do a public hearing. Uh, should the planning board hold a public hearing on this, and then get some feedback from the general public? Before the planning board makes its decision about what to recommend. To, uh, the town boards. Does that all make sense? Okay, now, having said that, the zone, so we can go around the room and introduce who's here. Uh, really, just, if, if you're on the zoning advisory committee, the group, just say that you are in which area you're representing, which committee you're representing. So I'm Tony Slar, I'm the chair of the uh, planning board. Uh, so that's the planning board is running this process. Chris Morrison, planning board.
Doug Anzak, agricultural advisory committee.
Nancy Monkenbeck, conservation board.
Marie McCray, climate action committee.
Pat Renna, residence, uh, resident, uh.
So you're missing.
Mr. Ram said I should join at some point, and I filled out a volunteer application for this board, because I think there's an open one.
Or is. Yes, the planning board alternate, yes.
Yes, okay, so.
Oh, great. Awesome.
Let's see how that goes.
Yeah.
So I, I'm Dan Lane, I'm deputy supervisor.
Joe Wilson, resident.
Uh, Hillary Lambert, driving resident, and for three years I was on a Town of Lansing, uh, advisory committee on how, what was gonna happen with the Cuyahoga Power Plant site. So knowing a little bit about what Terrell Wolf has in mind for that site. I'm here.
Bill Griffin, planning board.
Gina Cassidy, sound planner.
Ray Berger, planning director for the town.
Okay, on Zoom. Uh, go ahead, Nan.
Uh, Nan Stolzenberg, I'm your planning consultant.
Uh, Janice.
Unmute myself. Janice Graham, I'm the chair of the zoning board, the ZBA.
Okay. Uh, Christina. Is not gonna say anything. Okay. We have Christine, Christina Dreves on there as well. I think that's it. Okay, yeah, I think that's everyone. So that's who's here. All right, so. We're talking about this draft, did, and, and I, I, I will, the other thing I'll mention is that I've already had. Uh, well, there've been. There's been one or two emails that have been sent. Um. To, to, to the group. But I've also received a couple of emails that were sent just to John and I, uh, which I will, um, include with the minutes of this meeting, and we'll forward it obviously in the entire group, so that we have. Um, so that any, any sort of email comments that have come in will come in, and, and so far, the email comments that I've had uh, are in support of, are generally in support of a ban versus regulation, but, um. That's, you know, we'll, we'll share those as part of this, um. As, as part of this going forward.
Tony, can you make sure that I'm on the mailing list?
Yes, I will. Yeah, I, I. I, I will make sure of that. I'm sorry, I.
That's okay.
Yeah, when I said everything else, there's a, there's an email list called zag, right, at Dryden. Nan's not on it. So.
All right, Christina was unable to unmute, but she's unmuted now.
Oh, okay, Christina.
Hi there, sorry about that. Uh, Christina Davis down the town board.
Okay. Thanks. Um. So, uh. So, that's, that's like I said, I, I think this is something that people certainly have a, an opinion on, and, and so, you know, as we move through this, we might find that we don't look at that, so. Let's just start in. Who wants to start with comments on the draft? Right, Nan, do you want to say anything before we start doing comments?
Um. No, just to reiterate, um, that what, I, I don't know if my, um, memo or my note that went along with this, um, when I submitted it in the email got to everybody, but um, o- other than I, I recognize that this may have turned out to be longer and more complex than you might have thought when we first started. I mean, some of the things that are included in this were not things we talked at our first or second couple of meetings that we've had, so I recognize that, but, um. It is complicated, and there are a lot of facets to it that maybe weren't really considered, and my approach to these things is to start off very comprehensive, and you may decide you don't need all of those things, or some of those policies that are in there don't fit, and that's fine to take out, but I've found that it's easier to take out things than to not know they exist or not know that they're options, so, um, I recognize it might be more than you expected, but we'll, you know, you know, you could feel free to cut out um, pieces that may, are not comfortable, or go too far than, from what you wanted. Or maybe not go far enough, I don't know. So anyway, that was kind of my perspective, and I just wanted to know, um, there's no, um, you know, that there's no sense of ownership, you can edit it any way we need to, to meet the policy direction that the town wants to go.
Yeah.
Nan. Could you help me understand why banning data centers is not the way to go?
Uh, oh, be, well, it, it could be the way to go. That was not the direction that the zag started off with, um. That, you know, it's in your purview as a town to ban them if you want, but the that wasn't the direction that the, we started off with, so, you know, if you wanted to de-ban them, that's, that's a really easy. Um, you know, you don't need nine pages of regulation to ban them. You just have a one-liner that says with the definition to make sure that it's defined, and then you not allow it in any of your zoning districts, but that's a policy decision for the town to make.
I, and I don't, to be, to be honest, I don't think banning it is that simple, because I, I think, I think the, the issue is defining a data center.
Right, well, that's what I mean. It has to go along with the definitions.
Yeah, because I, I think. Um. You could, if, if you write it too. You write it too simply. Uh, it could be overly broad and, and ban things that you're really not intending to ban.
Right, right.
And prevent businesses from doing what they want to do.
I, I would add one thing, is that based on the input that we got from the zag when we first started this, the first meeting or two, and you guys wrote down, you discussed it and decided kind of the general parameters that I worked within. One of those general parameters was to limit the size, to allow them, but to limit the size of the, the structure, um, which I think it was five thousand square feet. Um. Which is very small. And, you know, most data centers are way, you know, by many scales larger than that, so as I was writing it, I kept it to what you had originally said, but I flagged that. I think that's a really important. Um, there's, there's a real distinction between a data, you know, a building that supports a local business that needs data processing versus the data center and the crypto mining uses that are coming in in places. Um, so I think that's a big. Um, that goes back to the definitions, and that's a real point of policy discussion that you guys need to have.
Is, is there also something in there that there can't be multiple of those buildings? Because that's how we end up having the large solar farms, is because each, each section can only produce so many kilowatts, but you have a whole series of them. And then you've got a larger.
Well, you, you could. It's always difficult to say you only get one. Um, you know, it's like, um. You would have to write, if you, if it's kind of. If you wanted to say, well, in the, um. Light industrial district, you're only gonna allow one data center to be X size. Uh, that, that's kind, in my opinion, that would be riskier to legally, uh, you know, if you've got you know. Five hundred acres in that district, and you're using five thousand square feet. What's the justification for that? So that one might need to be. If you want to limit them. I'm not sure, that we'd have to really think through that one.
Joe.
Um. I admit, I have a series of questions. The first one is. What are the perceived benefits to the town that a data center defined as it's defined right now? Bring to the town.
Hmm, good question.
It would be the benefits of having any business come to town.
I can't hear.
It would be the benefits of having any business come to town.
It would be like a tax, a tax benefit.
There's some little tax benefit.
There's no future.
I mean, there, there, well, again, it depends on the type of data center we're talking about. Some data centers do create some regular jobs, some don't.
I understand Nan has defined it for you as a preliminary thing. And I'm asking, what are the benefits to the town of having that particular kind of data center regulated as she's proposed for your consideration? Just a business, like any other business, an ice cream shop, a saddle shop. Of.
While they, they also produce, like, a data center does service other businesses generally, right, so that they help support local businesses and that kind of stuff. Now, again, it depends on, it depends on the type of data center we're talking about. That's why I said this gets very difficult to define. Exactly. We're talking about a crypto mining facility. To be honest, I couldn't play with the benefits of the towns. Right? If it's, if it's a crypto, if it's a straight crypto mining facility, I, I don't know what the benefit is to it.
Again, I confess I have a bunch of questions, but they're sort of start with.
Right.
This, what's, what's good in it for?
Yeah.
Us residents.
Okay. You, to be fair, you could say that for almost any business. That's true.
Well, no, this is a particular kind of business.
I agree.
Because if you're, if you're against a particular kind of business, you can always say that, like, well, what's the benefit to the town?
With due respect, I, I think businesses are very different. If you had a brothel. And I. You might think that's not a good thing to have, and that's different. Every business is unique and brings different things and different people. Uh, to it. That's, that's my point. So I don't think you can just say a data center is, is like any other business that ain't.
So Tony, you said something about, uh, a data center could serve other businesses. So if I own a business and I set up a five thousand square foot data center, seems large to me, but.
That's, that's very small.
It's, it's like a, you know, it's like a five thousand square foot building would be, um, like a Starbucks size, or like half the size of a Dollar General. Um, they're not big. It's not big at all.
So. So I feel like I need this data center for my business. And. So why would I serve other businesses in town? And if I started serving other businesses, wouldn't I want to following what Nancy said, put in another five thousand square feet and another five thousand square feet? And who's going to come and tell me oh, you're five thousand and ten square feet? Who's, who's gonna regulate that?
Well, that's all part of the enforcement side. That's, I mean, that's one of the things we're talking about in general, is how do we enforce our zone? How do, how do we impose, how do we enforce any of our zone codes? Right, so that's, that's certainly something we need to consider.
Well, how many businesses do the five thousand foot square, square foot data center?
Depends on what they're doing, could be thousands.
Thousands?
Could, a- a- again, it depends on what exactly they're doing. Could be one, it could be thousands. It's, it, it depends, that, that's the problem with defining data centers in general, is there is such a broad range of how they're built, and how, well, but not how they're built. The same hardware and infrastructure can be used for a wide range of uses. Right? Can be used for AI, can be used for crypto mining, can be used for just general cloud, cloud computing, can be used for for servicing other businesses, cloud storage and backup, and and, and all those kind of things, right? So there's, there's lots of things that a data center can be used for. And so the question becomes, one thing is, you know, do we want to be in the business of, of knowing every single thing that a person might be doing with what's inside this building? And so it's, it's.
So does that get more to the point of what, what are the objections to the data center? So, the ones I'm familiar with would be trying to cool, because i- i- you're talking about electronic production of knowledge, and, and there has to be cooling, and how how is it going to impact the price of electricity for local residents, because it's drawing on, on the grid? And is it drawing on water resources, and, and what is that?
And a lot of that is actually interesting. Nan actually put a lot of that in here, is it? Uh, because, so, so let's step back just a second and talk about these sections. So the, the, the one section is the definition, so it's and, and that's really the tricky part, right, is the definition. What exactly are we talking about here? And which, even if you do a ban, since we're gonna do a ban, you still have to do these definitions, because you really have to define it. What exactly is this?
Is that true? I thought the rule was, was if a use is not specified in your zoning code is permitted, then it ain't permitted.
No, it's not opposite. If it's not, if it's not defined, then it's a command.
Yeah, I mean, that, that one statement has to be written in your zoning. And, I mean, yes, that's generally how it works, but it has, you really have to have a sentence in there that says anything not listed in this table is considered prohibited.
Which, which we do, but again. There are those that argue what exactly a data center is. For example, we had one case where somebody wanted to put, put a crypto mining facility in, and they called it a service business. They didn't even think they needed a special use permit because they want, or not, they, they thought they'd do what they wanted, because they were looking at it as a service business. So you need to define what this, this is not like fracking or gas lines, that are very easy to define, right? It's, you, you have to find, if you want to ban it, you have to define what it is you're banning.
Just to remind everybody, that's why we're here. I guess the town, um, put a bar to it, and, you know, looked at this business, and, but, um, we had, um, was it, uh, eighteen months?
Yeah.
To come up with a solution, and by luck, we were engaged in a zoning update at time, so that was legally justified. Of course, that person, the entrepreneur, with the support didn't go anywhere, because we had a legitimate reason to do that. And so, um, and as Tony just mentioned, if you don't define something, uh, it, it can be done in, in your zoning code, so we have to at least have a definition. And that's not negotiable here. I mean, I have to find it, and then we can ban it, or we can, I think, as if I'm reading this right, the only way you could do one is through a special use permit.
Correct.
And so it still has to be. There's no by right. It still has to be approved by the town board, and uh, we might make some conditions on that.
And it's only allowed in light industrial.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's, it's, so, so for example, uh, you know, you couldn't put one of these next to a, you know, in a residential area, or rural residential, or even rural, um, agricultural. Um, right, so it's, it's, the, the way this is defined in here, the data, the only area that's allowed with an S and P is light industrial.
So that's these blue.
It's those, there's not, there's not a whole lot of light industrial zone in Dryden.
So this is the nice egg area.
That's the nice area.
And then the rest is actually right by the rail trail.
Um, no, it's further up from.
The nice egg area is rail trail.
Not the area is by the airport. The rail trail runs right through here.
Oh, that's real true, okay.
Real true.
So this is.
So this is right by the rail trail.
Lower Creek. Oh, okay, so this is the
This is.
After the bridge.
Correct. Right.
If you solve, if you solve the definition problem to your satisfaction, then what harm comes to us residents? If it's banned, if we define data center.
Well. If I can be perfectly honest, I think we should really, if you're talking about bans, you really need to flip it over. Because we should all, banning should be the last resort, and, and that should, things should only be banned if there's real significant harm that can come from them, and there's no way to to do that. To me, banning should always be the last resort of all of it.
Or if it doesn't match your comprehensive plan. I mean, don't forget that that's really, that's really the, the driving foundation for your zoning, is does it, is it consistent with the policies that you set up with your comprehensive?
Comprehensive plan. And one of the things in the comprehensive plan is there's, there's areas of the town that we wanted to grow businesses.
In historic beds arms that Nancy outlined, and everybody in the room knows about that are associated historically with data centers.
Certain types of data centers, yes.
How is the proposal going to make sure those don't occur in Dryden?
Because number one, they're, they're limited to five thousand square feet, for one. Number two, they're limited to various distinct areas. They're also, uh, limited in, uh, there's also some pieces down below that talk about power usage and water usage, and and noise, and all of these other things. I mean, what, what we're talking about allowing is actually, as Nan said, very small data centers. These are not, these are not, you know, the, the the data centers that are, that are causing all the harm are these ones, like what they want to put in Lansing, right, next to the, next to the power station? Like, uh, what's the one up north? There's one up north.
Clatsburg?
Clatsburg. Uh, there's some areas in Virginia where they, they built these like Amazon warehouse-sized data centers.
Yep.
That are sucking up huge amounts of power.
And so then.
Right, and, and, you know, that, you know, it's, these, we're not talking about data centers like what Microsoft's talking about spinning up Three Mile Island with power. Right?
What's the magic of five thousand, why not twenty-five hundred? For a thousand?
I, yeah, I, that, you know, that I had the same question. I think that was the, the size that, when we started talking, that you all felt was a consistent size.
Right.
But that's a footprint. Are you also considering height?
Well, there are, there are things that are, are zoning about height, right?
Yeah, but I think the five thousand square foot is the interior space, yeah.
So I didn't understand what Jerry was. I didn't understand Nan's answer to what's the magic in five thousand?
I think you're just a writer.
She doesn't know either. She went with what we, we, we came up with that number as a starting.
So it's arguable that you would consider twenty-five hundred thousand.
Again, we can consider anything. We could consider twenty-five thousand.
I mean, yeah, keep in mind that you allow twenty thousand square foot buildings in your, um, your LI districts.
Yeah, stand, standards, yeah. Light industrial, and you have buildings up to twenty thousand square. So we're actually talking about small, much smaller buildings, quarter the size of what a standard allowable building.
What confidence does everyone have that were, you just gave a laundry list of things that would prevent the kind of harms that we all know about? And
It's something we need to.
Noise was the last one, but there were a bunch before that. Um, with what confidence would you have the person, power, and the, um, financial resources to enforce all of those regulations?
True of all of our zone.
What?
It's true of all of our zone.
And we all know that. We're a glad occasionally comes in for review by the town board for a special use permit. We'll have the noise studies and have all the crackers laid out, so there will be a science behind what is picked. Then you're right, enforcement comes in afterwards that they build to the plan. Uh, but they are going to present something that's acceptable.
Does that, will those things that come out of the SUP require special expertise from our code enforcement?
Um. Yeah, it's all in the writing of the conditions.
And so we have the resources to train them? Or would that be a waste of money, because we won't have any? I think enforcement is of their question and how reasonable it is to ask of the people that we have on the board. You do the training, and then be prepared to do the enforcement.
What, what we, we've been talking about that through the whole zoning process, is how do we enforce all this stuff? I mean, that's, that's gonna be true of the entire zone, but.
Doesn't mean that it's not important.
No, no, I agree with you. I agree with you.
Can you risk penalties?
Uh, in the zoning code, sure we can. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
Tony, we know that five thousand square feet is a viable unit for a data center.
Then we know that decent data center, but it's not gonna be, like I said, it's, it's not gonna be a, it's not gonna be a big AI or huge crypto mining facility, but, but you can, you can build a workable data center. I, I, you know, you can build a workable data center a thousand, so, you know, I mean, it's, it's the data, again, this is the issue with data centers, is they, they come in all shapes and sizes and and uses, and it's, it can be a little bit nebulous to try to define what you can do with them. Right? Um. You know, people buy some of these, uh, GPU-based, uh, computers, and, and stick them under their desk in their house, and, and start running crypto mining now. So it's, it's, or trying to do their own local AI, right? So there's, there's uh, you know.
I think that's about the size chemistry is using for their, uh, some of. I think that's about the size chemistry is using for their, uh, some of their. Theoretical.
Yeah.
Uh, creations.
Server farms have certainly shrunk over what they were years ago, you know? I remember when, you know, we'd have a whole monster room full of computers. Stuff that you can do on your phone now, right, so. Uh. So anyway, so I guess, yeah, so there, so there's one question I think we need to resolve is, you know, is the, i- if we're going to. Regulate them. Or ban? Do we have the definitions right of what a data center is, right? And then, um, and then if we're not gonna ban them, but we're gonna regulate them. You know? Are the, are the regulations, you know, is the right number five thousand square feet? Is, you know, is it? It's, you know.
You would consider a thousand square feet?
We could. You know, small data centers run five hundred and twenty thousand square, but I I mean, I think a thousand square feet, to be perfectly honest, for any commercial building.
Yeah, I don't think that's viable.
I I don't think it's really viable, so I think not.
What? Yes.
So, you know, so that's something, you know, so, so that's something that we can consider. Um. So. Uh. Trying to think what the best approach is for.
Does anybody know?
Want to go over the definition?
Yeah, let's go over the definition, yeah.
Does anybody know the size of the building on Route thirteen? Uh, by George Rhodes, uh, that was the proposal that was brought to the town for.
That class is out there.
That class of.
Picture maybe.
No.
Sure.
Well, yeah, it's 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 a quantum.
Yeah, I'm picturing that like forty by a hundred, so.
Yeah, maybe.
Four thousand.
Okay.
You're roughly. So five thousand square feet is a much bigger than that. Right? So it's. Uh. Yeah, I I, yeah, the question is, is it viable, right? And so.
Yeah.
Um. So I have to do, you know, so we can talk about that. Okay, so definitions. Uh, so the data center is defined as an industrial facility that is primarily used for storage and. Processing and transmission of digital data. Child's computer network equipment. Um. I don't hope I necessarily need to read all this, but we do talk in here about. The the Dan talks in here about uh. Possible uses which include artificial intelligence and or cryptocurrency mining. Uh, as a principal land use on a person. Equipment and accessories, uh, customary data centers include or not limited to air hammered power generators. Uh, water cooling. Uh, and storage facilities, utility substations and other associated utility infrastructure. They'll also be considered as part of the data centers. Some data centers, some very large data centers actually have to have a substation sitting next to them, right? So it's, it's.
I figured that was why.
But but when we talk about these that are five thousand square feet or smaller, you're not gonna need a. You know, they'll need a decent action coming in, but you're not gonna need a substation sitting. Right? Um.
And one, Tony, one, one thing that I, the way I have this is that a cryptocurrency mining is a type of data setter.
Correct.
But you can change that. If you want to make a clear distinction and call them totally separate, so a crypto mining facility is. You know, we take that out of the data center realm. So that there are two uses instead of a subset of the same use. That's another option.
So could we run into legal issues? And this would be a question for the town lawyer, I guess, maybe Dan, maybe you might have some insight. Uh. If we were to say, let's say we were to find. Types of data center and what was cryptocurrency. And we wanted to ban crypto things, because that's the one that re- really people have the most objective. Um. The. Uh. Legally, can we do, like, is that legal? I mean, it's a data center, right? Like, but could 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 they argue that, well, this is a data center that can be used for this, 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 and this? Why can't I use it for this, but I can use it for that? Right? I, is that legal?
And how would we know?
Well, it I it's no different than in a use table where you say in a certain district you allow. Um. You know, retail stores, um, or maybe you allow a service uh, center offices, you know, like, um. A haircut place or, you know, a doctor's office, professional offices, but you don't allow retail. I mean, you know, so I think that if. I use certainly can check with the attorney, but I think that you, there's. You can just make these definitions to regulate whatever you want.
Yeah. So what you're saying is you think we could, we could define cryptocurrencies separately from other types of data center?
Yes. The we, so we would write that, that the, excuse me, that the data center, um, we would specifically write a sentence that says. A data center shall not include a cryptocurrency mine and then have a separate definition for cryptocurrency mine.
Okay. Uh, go ahead.
I I noticed it's the accessory structures that has equipment and staff to serve. An onsite business, well, the data center would be the onsite business. So.
Well, this is, this is, this is talking about if you were to. Take a room in your business and fill it full of computers to be your data center for your business. That's not considered a data center. It it's, it would be considered a server room for your business, but it wouldn't be considered a data, if what's. Which I think is what's happening. In the village, freeville.
But what I, my answer would be if, it would be if I wanted to do this. They have the five thousand square feet for the data center. And then that kind of is my business, I'm allowed an accessory structure. Um, to house equipment and staff to serve an onsite business.
No. No, this, the accessory structure, this is saying that if you have an onsite business. And you build an accessory structure to house computer equipment. That's not considered a data center. Is that, am I, am I understanding that right, man?
Right.
It's not saying, it's not saying.
Okay, I just find it confusing. I'm not sure.
We, we can look at rewording that a little bit, but the, but so the, so what it's, what it's saying here is that. An accessory structure on an existing business property.
I I just know what you're trying to say. I'm just not sure that's what this really says.
Yeah, we can look at, we can look at that wording a little bit. Uh. Cause again, you know, so for example, if Dryden Mutual Insurance wanted to. Like that building that they just bought renovated up front on thirteen, right? But if they wanted to turn that into a computer center for their business. That would, the idea is that would not fall under this. We think it should.
But hot and wet, right? You got this thing of what a data center is.
Right.
Since we should. Serve an onsite business. So not we.
So these are principal uses. So this is, this is a proposal that has, the principal use is. To process data of some sort. Not associated with, you know, another onsite business that's. A car dealership or whatever that needs.
Yeah, may- maybe we should put it in there. Cause really what that, what that last sentence is doing is decide, is it's it's kind of defining what. A a, a structure that's not considered a data center, right? Cause the first part is defining what a data center is. The latter part, that that last sentence is really defining what a data center is.
But if the insurance company was using. Data storage from data center, then that wouldn't be the same.
Correct. If they were, so so for example, if they didn't buy that building in front and some other person bought it and filled it with computers. And it did the work for them, then that would be. You see what I'm saying? Cause the principal use of that property is a data center. As it is right now, the principally, and I I hate to pick on Dryden Mutual, cause I'm sure they're not doing this, but. But it's just a property I I'm familiar with, right? But if if they, if they were to take a bill or bill a building on their property to house computers. For their business, it would not be considered a data center. Yes.
Also, test. Some of the things they're thinking about is we don't want. In the town of Dryden, something that's gonna suck up a lot of power. Or destroy our water supply or strain our. So. Some of this. Needs to be put against that. That's, those are the evils. Data centers.
What's the neighbor?
Nickerbockers.
So you're saying we don't want Nickerbocker?
Well, I don't.
They use a lot of power and they use a lot of water.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But but they also have a lot of jobs.
What's the data centers?
Uh, it's printing something, it's in your.
Power is addressed in this.
Maybe we're missing the word dedicated.
Yes.
If uh, if a building, understanding.
Well, yeah, it it could be dedicated or and and she, it principal uses in here somewhere, but it's.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the definition already.
The last sentence was saying dedicated to serve a dedicated, you know, dedicated.
Yeah.
Business or office.
Yeah.
So if they put up a thousand square feet and there's, they got excess. Computers and they want to sell it to another business down the street. I think it's kind of becomes a data center. It's no longer dedicated to just that business.
Yeah. Uh, okay.
Um, just the question when we, I I just wanted to just say, cause you've talked about electricity and um, when I did the research on. On all of these things. Um. The range, the that, the general kind of, um, because split them into small data centers, mid data si- mid-sized data centers. And large data centers. The small data centers are kind of rated or called five hundred to twenty thousand square feet. And that you, so a five hundred square foot. Data center can consume one megawatt annually, up to twenty thousand square foot. Is, so it's basically a megawatt per thousand square feet.
I don't want to add, if you, you're gonna restrict it based on whether or not they sell the data. That means enforcement means you have to analyze and audit their business books. I don't see that happening, nor. Nor do I see that as actually a very good thing for the town to do.
And and we would be, this would be, you you know, how are we gonna, if somebody. File a business and I set up a bunch of computer in my room, my business, and then I sit down, my guys down the street, I would be moving my. Computers, a data center, we're gonna. And again.
You start to see.
What we want, what we want, we want, we want businesses to be able to. Build what they need to run their businesses, right? Uh, cause there's a lot of, you know. With uh.
But you don't want someone to skirt the law.
Correct.
To get away from being called a data center.
Correct.
By saying, well, I already own a business. I just built this building out here for my business and then. In the shadows, they're selling their resources to other businesses. Sure, it's gonna be hard for us to enforce it, but at least it's written down. And then it's caught.
Right.
Back to Nan's point, the the megawatt per thousand square foot on you. So we're talking of five megawatts per year. How significant is that to?
Five megawatts as businesses though?
Yeah.
That's not that much. I I mean, I would, I I'd love to see what Nickerbocker uses, I'll bet it's.
Yeah.
I'll bet it's at least ten times that. If not.
Kind of a business. On. Would. Set up a dedicated thousand square feet. For computers. I mean, eggways.
A big insurance company. Or not even a big insurance, an insurance company, I can think of a number of businesses that would set up a thousand square foot.
Help me out with a couple more examples.
Uh, could be engineering businesses, uh, in Coda, I may have. I mean, another one to think about, you know, so we have another business in in the town of Dryden, which I think is good for the town. Was in Coda, my three D. They have, they have a huge amount of computer equipment. And they also use a lot of power because all their, all their uh, fabricating equipment, they they have these monster three D printers that work with titanium. They use, you know, they use huge amounts of power. Five megawatts is nothing to a building.
And they're good because there's lots of.
Because, because they produce jobs and tax. I mean, are you, are you saying we don't want businesses in our town?
No, no, no. I'm trying to understand. The distinctions between what's good and what's not.
I mean, one of the bad things about some of these data centers, especially the crypto mining facilities, is they don't create a lot of. Right? So 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 they, they use a lot of power, they use a lot of resources, uh, they can be noisy, they can be bad neighbors. And they don't produce a lot of jobs, right? And and so really want to be careful about where these things are about, right? Just, so it's, it's. Uh, but I think businesses that, you know. I think we want our track business, especially tech businesses, you know, tech businesses are a good thing. Out and and, you know, see, we we want to be careful about. Allowing that, you know, the things we want, but not, you know.
Do, do these businesses pay any kind of unusual tax, can we? Tax of that's applied with, where it's financial benefit to the town, other than. The standard real estate tax.
Businesses are taxed differently than residential anyway, right?
Or the property.
It's just property.
Correct, yeah. So.
I mean.
You know, one question was, what are these things worth? I mean, I guess that is a consideration if it's a fifty million dollar data center. What was our tax rate for everyone else? Tax levy, and if it's not emitting toxins.
Right.
Other than that's something consideration.
I know, I'm gonna listen to it for a while, I think, but I can.
Um, you know, you know, if we, if it went for a special use permit, we might say, what are you willing to do to offset your emissions?
Right.
And then, you know, very much power and will you use your power during, you know, uh, off hours? So it's not putting in a burden when other entities are using daytime electricity, and we can put conditions on it that way.
Yeah.
You know, these things can run twenty four seven, not.
They can.
And do you need it to be stacked? Can it just be running with no one there? That's a security problem? Somebody has to keep an eye on.
Yeah.
And and I like the point on terms of water usage, we can can it. That also, it's, it probably doesn't use as much as trying to pool a large data center. But to put in a commercial canning facility also uses a lot of water, so, so think about. You know, there's.
Yeah.
There's other things that. That and that is resources.
And 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 these other things produce, you know, and Coda produces products. Granted, are they products that we purchase locally here in the town? Not much, like, you know, they do a lot of. Uh. You know, they use things like airplane parts and. Military parts and that kind of stuff, but you know, it's. But it's, it's still bringing jobs to the community, it's adding to the tax base. Uh.
Producing an object.
It's it's producing an object, which, which, which cryptocurrency is not, right? And so it's, it's, I get it. So the, the, uh, right. So, uh, in the definitions, we have, so cri- cryptocurrency, I think that definition is good. To digitally generate currency, crypto mining. Uh. Blockchain, we're just talking about mining blockchains, which is, nobody in here knows what blockchain is, but it's what cryptocurrency is based on.
Picky, you think about crypto mining?
Yeah.
That's. Action and the data center is a.
But the data center is a thing. Uh.
But a crypto, cryptocurrency mining is a data center. It happens in a data, it's an activity.
It's an activity in the data center.
That's the way it's currently written. It doesn't have to be that way. Like I said, it could be separated.
It's, it's, so, so a- actually, true, it could, you could say crypto mining. Data center would be defined as a data center for the person, right?
Just a part of speech thing.
Right. Crypto mining, you're right, is an action that's done in the data center.
Or mining operations.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, sensitive receptors. Uh, schools, preschools, day scares. Yep. Server farm, where do you get the server farm definition? Cause I I found that one interesting. Three or more interconnected computers housed together in a single facility whose primary function is to report. Cryptocurrency mine. Art of and and I think the.
That's an or it should be an or artificial intelligence or data processing.
Processing, right?
Yeah, I I added that in because I think somewhere else the word server um, came, the server farm is somewhere else. So I felt that there needed to be a definition of that. I forget, I'd have to find where we used it.
Yeah, yeah.
And you put a comma after artificial intelligence as well as the or, just to make sure.
Yep.
Our expert come, oh, very.
Yep, artificial intelligence. Or I I I thought that should be an or.
Yeah, that's just a typo, sorry.
Or, yeah. Uh, unreasonable noise. Um, we already have a. We already, I mean, I think we should have unreasonable noise defined here, but we also have a noise ordinance within the town.
Also, why is there unreasonableness?
So is is this can inconsistent or consistent with what you already have?
Consistent generally, I haven't looked at it exactly.
So we may, what we may wanna do is just align the noise verbage here with what's in our current.
Or just refer to it, why not just refer to it?
You could, we could. I I I actually like the idea of it being defined here, but but we need to make sure they align. But. Uh, but yes, you you're you're absolutely right, you could just refer to it as noise ordinance. All right, is are there any other definitions that people think we need to have to define these things?
I have a, um, some data center.
Yeah.
Why can't we just take out that last sentence about accessory structures to suit, but to me that could present a lot of loophole. Places where people could get around this with an accessory.
We could take that sentence right off.
We already have where it's limited to the light industrial through a special use permit. And light industrials on big power lines and has connections to bigger water sources. It's bold and points, it doesn't necessarily impact a lot there. And cryptocurrency through weighing our other meetings over that, it's been a pretty standard top that. It's of no use to the town, so why not just separate that out?
Man, correct me if I'm wrong, but if if somebody was gonna build an accessory structure. In say, uh, the business, a business district now, uh, what what's the word I'm looking for?
Mix use commercial.
Mix mix use commercial, somebody who's got. Put an accessory building in a mixed-use commercial zone and the purpose of that building was to put in computers to support their. To support their business, that accessory use would 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 be covered. Would be sort of reviewed and and done as part of the site plan review and all that for accessory building. And 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 it wouldn't fall as a data center anyway, because it doesn't meet the definition.
It's not the principal use.
It's not the principal use on the property, so it's not, yeah.
Yeah, I just love to take that out of that.
Yeah, we can take, I think we can take that.
But these parameters for a data center could be applied to an accessory use.
They could, yeah, yeah.
There should be a limit accessory use.
Uh, or make it follow the same.
Yeah.
All the same, yeah.
Yeah.
Nan, what would be the best way of uh, making that tie so that any accessory use, say, a insurance company puts an accessory structure to put in a. Thousands square feet of servers. How would we tie these regulations to that accessory use?
So you're saying that you want you want a situation, so if someone does that, you want to have that accessory use regulated under this law?
We want to make sure all the screening requirements, all the setbacks from.
Um, well, then I think you would have to just come right out and say just what you said is that. The opposite of what this last sentence is, it would be then accessory structures or rooms that house equipment and staff to serve an onsite business shall also be considered a data center.
Right. And then they would be, then they'd fall under the specialty, but are you are, well, but you're talking about. No, you want it to be defined as something different, cause you don't wanna like Dryden Insurance wanted to put a building in, they wouldn't because they're not in a light industrial district.
Yeah, right, this is only gonna apply in that limited situation.
Uh, what I mean, you could put something in that says accessory use. Again, like she said, the opposite, what 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 Nan said, but it's but but where the on properties where the. Principal use is not the data center. That it it, you know, certain pieces of the supply.
Yeah.
Like like the backs, the screening, the, you know, all of those kind of things, right?
Yeah, you could also in the chart, if you go down a little further where we had all of the Xs in the other um, money districts. You could change those Xs to say that.
Accessory.
Only accessory uh, uses to existing bill, only data centers accessory to existing. Businesses shall be allowed and you know, and then they shall follow sections, blah, 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 whatever the rules are that you want.
Gotcha, yeah, that would work. But people can't just come in and build a, in the in all these other districts, people can't just come in and build a data center, right? All right.
And now we may wanna reduce the square footage also.
Yeah, so we we probably would add, have to add a whole section just for accessory data centers.
Right. And and a definition for accessory.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, got it. Okay. Allowable use group chart, I mean. And then we're talking about. This is the part where we talk about light industrial and five thousand square feet. And we already have feedback that some think we should make it less than five thousand square feet. If we're allowed. Right? Okay, we'll have to talk about that, but I think I I think for the moment, let's leave it at five thousand um. For the purposes of the draft and then we'll see. Where it goes with the. Additional feedback and all that.
So our comments should be strong. Our comments will be strong.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think, um, so I'm not sure we came up with the five thousand square foot, but. I would think that what you wanna do is if you're gonna define these things, you wanna make it. Number one, make it so that they don't feel like it's worthwhile to come in and do something that size. But also give them leeway that they can't come out to town and say you. You made sure we couldn't do this.
Right.
Where five thousand square foot would kind of alleviate any possibly alleviate.
I mean, the the.
And that type thing, so you if you ban an outright, of course, there's gonna be lawsuits and court cases. But if you define it and strictly define it, it reduces the numbers of. Businesses that wouldn't want to do this. Um, but also, you know, if you defined it as twenty-five square feet, then of course, that's still gonna be just like banning. And this is as close to banning as you can get without. Well, not really, when, well, you could do with that, it's getting smaller, right? And they get smaller, but they use less energy that way. I don't know that to be true one way or the other. My phone does everything my computer used to do. And I only have to charge it every couple of days, so it's not using a whole lot of energy, so the the size of computers doesn't.
It depends on the product, like the the GPUs, the GPUs that are used for crypto mining, AI. Um, they. Throw out fair amount of power, I mean, it's a, I mean, I'll put it this way. A chat GPT. Uh, question, like if you ask chat GPT a question. Uh, uses about a hundred times more energy than. A Google search. Yeah.
I I I personally won't ever ask chat GPT a question. I won't ever, I don't want to use. Artificial intelligence, I don't, I think it's. And the movie two thousand one Space Odyssey showed us what could happen when artificial intelligence takes over. It's just scary.
Yeah.
It can be, there can be benefits and cryptocurrency is like religion to me, you. You you know, there there is this entity that you can't see, can't feel, you can't touch. And somehow it's got this enormous value.
Right.
That's just that landish shenda, so I would prefer.
Yeah.
To say no, but at the same time, I'm saying. Let's say no, but. But.
To minimize lawsuits.
I I just met somebody.
Yeah, part of that, yeah.
Businesses actually doing doing AI for and trying to have. Be subject to matter restricted. Um, and I think he was saying he feels that's the way of the future and it makes sense to me.
It can take, it can take huge amounts of time and research and and.
And and that will then be more more accurate, if you will, because it's both it's it's a focused thing. That would, I could see something like that. Um, being in a smaller space because it's it's not looking at the world of information. It's looking at a very restricted amount of information. So if if this vision, his vision of this coming world happens, then these small. Data centers could be very useful and and could exist in your five thousand square foot. And I expect that they probably would not use immense amounts, such immense amount of energy for cooling. This certainly, my my old Mac, the original Mac, certainly would get hot. This is a lot more powerful and does it gets warm in my pocket, but it doesn't get hot. So I think it's things that get. Smaller that that the cooling, you do get more information with less heat.
I wonder if. This part of the discussion is. At all accurate or whether we're just taking analogies, if it's small, it's can't be bad.
It's cute. No, I don't think that it's not that it can't be bad, I'm just saying that, you know, we can't. We can't say that because this is the way it's working now, that that is the way it will work in the future.
Well, would, and my thought was making things smaller is not going to handicap. That industry which keeps making things more powerful in smaller packages. So five thousand isn't any magic size, fifteen hundred might be. Good enough to conduct the business as everybody thinks they want.
Right, well, that's something we can look at.
We can go.
I mean, a small, a small data center right now is considered anything five hundred twenty thousand square. So twenty, uh, anything under twenty thousand square feet is considered a.
But the use difference are equipments.
Let me just add one point just for throwing in for consideration is that. And whatever, regardless of what the size is, let's you say you pick five thousand or you, whatever the number turns out to be. That. That that then opens up, so someone comes in and says, well. You know, for whatever reasons, five thousand isn't gonna work, I'd really like ten thousand. And so they come to the town uh, to go to the ZBA to get an area, that would be an area variance, not a use variance. And an area variance has much less, um. Mu- much less of a bar to reach in order to get an area variance, so it is, you just need to consider that. People are exquisite in their way of getting or finding ways to get around these rules. And an area variance is is the legal process that someone would take to try and get something bigger, just so that you're aware.
They they would still have to go through the special use permit process, right?
Originally, yes, they would still have to go through the special use process. Um, and they would have to go to the the additional step, they would have to go to the ZBA to get an area variance. I'm just saying that an area variance is easier to get than a use variances.
Right.
So if you say it's allowed, it's an allowed use, I know you should consider a special. The special use permit are allowed uses, but they have characteristics that make them. Harder to fit into whatever neighborhood you're trying to fit them in, but they are allowed uses, so. Um, I'm just saying that. There is a legal mechanism for someone to come in and and make their case that they should get a different size.
Which begs the question of whether you want the use at all. Sort of circle around.
Or no, in no different spot than we were for the first uh, ZAD meeting.
Yeah.
Currently.
You're right.
Why do you wanna go forward with five thousand? It just seems to me that that'll get stuck in place. If we move forward with five thousand, because the only way to change that would be by public opinion. And comment. It just seems if people want smaller spaces, maybe. We should try a smaller number. I'm looking at you, Ray, but.
The other consideration is a serial, like I think it started to bring up before, is like serial placing them. So if I can only have five thousand square feet, well, and then I have twenty of them. So like our billboard law restricts billboards based on distance from other, you could put something like that in.
Yeah, you could, I, well, and we've talked about density. For housing, right? You could do something similar here where we put the density that you can only have, like, you you're right, with the with the with the um. Sign, the billboard overlay district. You can't have two billboards within a certain distance of each other, you can, you know, you could, you could do something. You you could add some depth, right? Nan, we could add some density requirement that says you can't have more than. You know. Or or the data.
And that was for a total in the town.
In the in the town, yeah, or 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 uh, you can't have more than two of these in a. However many acre area or whatever, right? So the the, cause you could do, so you you couldn't. Like do what they did with the with the solar farms, which is, you know, place one next to the other, next to the other, next to the other, right? Uh, I I mean, I think there are ways we could address that, right, Nan? We we could do some kind of density.
Uh, yeah, I, we could. You know, as long as this defense, you know, as long as it's not, um. I mean, as long as it's understandable, um, I think that some I'd have to. This is where the lawyer could help, but I know that there have been some. Lawsuits for communities that have uh, tried to separate like gas stations and convenience stores. And they said, yeah, you have to be a thousand feet apart and those have failed or at least some of them have failed. So we just would wanna be sure we got it, we got that right.
Good to know, well, but could it be covered under the, I I know I'm jumping way down, but there's the. The sections where we talk about energy usage and having to get. Uh, where is it? Uh, there's a NICE certification.
Large, it's the light industrial area.
It's just the blue there, it's not, it's not big.
But how much, how many five thousand square foot data centers could you fit?
Well, there are a lot of existing buildings.
Is it five acres, is it ten acres, is it?
How how many acres is the light industrial, I have no idea.
Yeah, so there with the buffering, you could probably put a five thousand square foot building on an acre, so, you know, you could pit. A hundred. Five thousand square foot facilities. That's why I think some kind of maximum or spatial separation buffering or.
So so the 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 buffering may have failed, the spatial separation may have failed, but maybe your total square footage.
Total square.
May may be the way to prevent having too many, right, is that?
Yeah.
But you're also gonna catch some of it in the S energies, because you have to get a NICE certification and if you start getting too many of these, it's cause they're gonna start drawing too much power.
Yeah, I don't wanna rely on NICE.
Have them at uh, for square footage or something, um, that would be per owner, right? So if you had a number of these.
No, no, we're talking about making it so you can't have, like, what I think what Ray is suggesting is, we could say, for example. If you said there could be no more than twenty-five thousand square feet total in the light industrial zone.
Yeah, okay.
You would not be able to build more than five.
You couldn't have multiple companies coming in eventually or all some sort of this, yeah.
You wouldn't have more than five of these. You wouldn't have more than five of these. That might be a better approach, and I'm not saying twenty five thousand is the right number. I just threw it out there because I know it's five times five, right? So it's it's a uh the um. The uh but that might be a better way than trying to do the separation.
Mm hmm, yes.
And that way, the biggest draw on our grid, our town grid would be ten megawatts.
But then limit the size to a thousand square feet, outweigh five of them, it's five thousand square feet.
Right, but if you set a total square footage that you can have in the light light industrial zone, then it doesn't matter whether they build. Uh, twenty five, one thousand square foot one, like if if like I said, if I said, if I said twenty five thousand square feet, you could. And again, I'm not saying it should be twenty five thousand square feet, but.
I'm sorry.
But Ray, let's use Ray's example better, because it's ten thousand square feet. So if if you set the maximum at ten thousand, then that you couldn't build more than two. Two five thousand square feet or ten one thousand square feet. Or twenty five hundred square foot, right? But the but the the point is, is it would limit, it it would sort of alleviate that issue of. You know, of of of, you know, taking that whole light industrial zone and turning it into five thousand square foot data center. Which I don't doubt very seriously will never happen, but. But it would keep you from doing that, yeah.
It seems to me that one could be opposed to the uses of the data center. Are opposed to them.
That that's really what what people are most opposed to is the uses of the data centers, not the data centers themselves and.
Well, I know. Operation, the cost of operation.
Right.
This, you seem to be focused on the cost of operation mostly, the heat and the water use and the electricity.
Right.
Those are the costs of operation. That's different from what's gonna be done with the data center.
Right. Yeah.
And there could be objections to both.
Right. Well, because there are exemptions, what's gonna be like, for example, with cri- with with crypto mining and to a lesser degree A I. Uh, you know, people are opposed to, you know, data centers for those uses because. Thunder.
They don't like it.
You said that word.
If as if as some people have suggested, your technology um finds a solution that. Allows us to use less water and less electricity than the the cost of operation argument would go away.
Would would I doubt it would ever go away, but it would diminish, yes.
Well, like the iPhone example is terrific. You don't wanna carry around.
Yeah.
Six hundred pound computer.
That's right.
But you have a great point, because the projection is something like a twenty five percent increase in electricity demand. Over the next five years. Yeah, because of the increased use, so something's gotta give. Yes. Or we're gonna just see more of these things. If it's not gonna go here, it's gonna go somewhere else, I think. That's. We may, you know, prevent it from happening in Dryden, but it's going to happen somewhere else.
We shouldn't prevent it in Dryden.
Right, right.
Well, that's what I just said. But, you know, it's not gonna stop the overall trend of the energy being used. Communities are rolling out the red carpet for this stuff outside of Pittsburgh and.
Yeah.
Other communities, they they can't wait to get a new data center.
Well, good, but they're not Dryden.
But it.
Protecting Dryden.
The same repercussions that concern you are going to still be facing you.
That's why we're in the headwaters.
Doug, you you weren't concerned, I think you're bringing up is people are concerned about the water and the electricity use. But you're concerned about the content?
I I I'm not concerned, but.
But you said this is a separate issue.
There could be people here and in the community who are concerned about the use of the data center, crypto mining or.
There's there are, there's there's a large number of people that are concerned about, especially crypto. I mean, that's the best example. There are also, like I said, people are also opposed to A I, but. It's it's to a lesser degree across the board in general than with crypto mining. Crypto mining is the one that people just are that use particularly is is most opposed.
More of an opinion than.
A lot of residents invested in crypto.
There are, you know, there's.
We don't have the data.
We don't have the data.
Not illegal, so.
It strikes me that the objection on that is more that. It's using the resources to create something that's observed by those as not useful. But I find that somewhat similar to someone, you you know, you're talking about regulating a product. And there could be someone who would object to someone having a studio because they really hate the art that's coming out.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Uh, what raised a red flag for the town was the exorbitant use of energy. And we just heard that, you know, some projects that have been proposed, some of the developers have been told there wasn't enough power on the grid. So that was when you asked, what what was the original scent on this? You know, that caught our attention. I like the wording in this. I I will commend um Nan and John for working on uh what's on, what is it, page three? The the um the section on energy.
Yeah.
Yep, that that's really helpful. Um, is that, where where is that?
It's just page three, second.
Yeah. I think that's really important is that. Like when we start getting into, you know, crypto, you know, do we. So I understand there are different types of crypto that use more proof of work versus proof of stake. I think there are two different, very, very different technologies. Proof of stake uses much less electricity. Would would we wanna point that out in this? And I think, you know, we we would allow that, but not proof of work technology. And that's when we're getting into the real weeds and who's going to check, you know?
Well, and I and I really, I know it's ended up being nine pages, but I really like the way this, you know, this this talked about, this this goes through. You know, everything, uh, you know, setbacks, your energy usage setbacks. Parking, lighting, right? So they can't produce excessive lighting, fencing, signage, screening is all in here. Um, noise and heat. And there's a lot of detail in here that I appreciate. Because I think it's like if the town's board is reviewing a special use permit, it gives you really something to. Compare against, right?
There are a lot of questions that have to be answered up front.
Yeah, 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 infrastructure, you know, uh, verifications on electricity. I mean, one of the things, you know, that you could almost do, I suppose, is is, you know, make it that they have to. Figure out, you know, where their power generation is coming from. You know, and then the one of the things I like in here also is one of the things that caught my eye because. I've seen data centers do this. There's a great big one down in Pennsylvania. Uh, there wasn't enough power on the grid, so what they do, they brought in a bunch of huge industrial diesel generators.
Yes.
And and it's like, yeah, so this one, this one mentions in the electricity section, data centers may use dedicated fossil fuel generators. For emergency power, and the public utility is not available, but not for normal use. Right? Cause cause there are, there are some data centers that have been built that use diesel generators as their primary source of. Power, which is really bad, right, as we all.
Oh, the one in Lansing was gonna use the coal plants, right?
Well, they were gonna convert it to natural gas and still. Still was, uh, right, they were gonna, is that what that was or they're.
I thought they did.
Yeah, they may have already died. Yeah, so they, I I think they converted it to natural gas and they were gonna use natural gas, not coal, but.
No.
Um, but yeah, i- i- in any event, they were talking about spinning up a a fossil fuel power plant. Simply to power a crypto mining operation.
So she brought up solar. Could they install solar panels on their roof?
Well, this does mention that they. Well, you know, I mean, you could.
If they have a lot of acreage, they could put up some.
Well, but in in the light industrial zone, I'm not gonna have a lot of any. I mean, if you were gonna allow it and say, you know, rural ag or something, then yeah, you could. You could probably have enough acreage to put up some solar. But for a five thousand square foot one, you could probably put up enough solar panels to power it, but you'd need a. You need something like what's behind the cemetery over there.
That's twelve.
That's twelve, right?
What?
That's twelve.
Megawatts.
Megawatts, yeah. Yeah, so that behind the cemetery.
Game Farm Road.
That's uh seventeen seventeen megawatts, yeah. The game park, well, all of those around game, because remember they're split up in. That's a little thing is seventeen megawatts. Uh, so that gives you, you know. So, you know, if you're using. Uh. If. If you're using five megawatts. Yeah, I mean, you know, you wouldn't need anything, y- you could probably do it with a. You you need more than. Uh, five megawatt solar array, because the solar array is not producing power all the time, right? So you probably need at least a fifteen megawatt to power a five megawatt facility, I would think. I don't, I'm just guessing. I really don't know. We'd have to figure that out, but. So you, my point is you need a fair amount of acreage, if you wanna do it all with solar, uh. The.
It's about five, five acres per megawatt.
Right, it's about five, right, exactly right. So even five megawatts is.
That might be a tough sell for the town anyway, because we're. Community solar, we we score, because that produces boss. We do that for a private entity, um, Michael, it's a sell.
But to take that much acreage, correct. Well, and and like I said, we're we're limiting these to the light industrial zone. There's no place in the light industrial zone you could, you could, you could put up something like that.
So something mentioned future.
Yeah.
The future and technology was out there. There, they've been talking about tiny nuclear power plants, maybe that's, please, you know, comes in and. You know.
I don't know, I I I think. I I think some of these, some of these. You know, Japan, Japan has been putting in these really small, they don't require much cooling, they basically put them in and forget them. Uh, and they can power like a village or a town.
Yeah.
Uh, and they're very small, they don't produce the waste of of large nuclear facility. That's actually, it's actually really cool technology.
They're fusion.
Uh, they're not fusion, but they're still efficient, but they're they're using a different type of, they're not using the, what is it? Trying to remember the. No, they're not using uranium. They're not, they're not using uranium or plutonium or those really highly radioactive. It's a, it's a different uh material that they use and there there are different kind of reactor, but they're still a nuclear reactor. They might be storing, you know. The Voyager spacecraft has been running off a small nuclear reactor in space for. Fifty years, right? Almost fifty years now, right? So it's, yeah. There's. There is some nuclear technology that I think is actually pretty cool, but. Uh, anyway, we're not talking about nuclear.
You're wondering if if your restrictions include that we would get to review. If they bring one.
It could be on the permit.
Well, the special use permit, the the special use permit process is gonna have a site plan review, so so however they're powering this facility is gonna be part of that.
Right, but you'd have to approve it if there's nothing in there that says that.
Right. Well, no, I don't think so.
No, no, you get to just decide that the site plan that you don't like their power source. That doesn't sound right.
Well, we could put it in here. Cause we do, I mean, we say here that they they can't use dedicated fossil fuel generators for more.
Or or nuclear.
No.
But there's a paragraph um. Under safety, no, for renewable energy expedition.
There is the section on renewable, yeah, there is the section on the.
And renewable energies such as onsite generation, power purchase agreements. Green energy sourcing or co-location with renewable project. Seems like nuclear could be written in. On site generation.
What if they have a tesseract?
A what?
Tesseract, that's from from the Avengers, you know, the little thing that. You know, maybe they. Think it's from the future.
Oh, yeah, it'll always be a nice onsite generator, this is hydrogen fuel cells.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hydrogen fuel cells.
Been chasing that one for years.
Yeah, I know.
What color hydrogen?
What color hydrogen?
Yeah. Some that suck up a lot of power. And create a lot of pollution. Brown, for instance, versus blue versus green.
I wish some hydrogen.
Is the process of creating them, or there's a dirty or clean process to create.
How how hydrogen is extracted? The one I like the best is is solar facilities that, like there's there's one, where is it? Just read about one in Europe.
I think the Middle East will be right for this.
Yeah, no, there's you want it, where is it? I just read about it. They they build it. They build a facility, it's it's a hydrogen powered facility, but they generate all the hydrogen from solar. So that, you know, the hydrogen generation is all done.
I think you need some water, right?
Yeah, it's water, it's, but it's powered by, it's all solar, so all the, the the hydrogen is recovered from water.
Right.
Using solar energy and then that's used to power. Whatever it is, is it the, they built a steel plant that's hydrogen?
So that would be called green hydrogen.
Yeah, correct.
The oxygen.
That's supposed to blue that.
I don't know, they do with the. All right, what else do we need to, or?
We just cleaned up that language on page eight, where we just were for dot one, it says use waste, use waste heat recovery. I think we mean for district heating.
Oh, yeah, okay, yep.
Or district heating. Or nearby facilities, I think you.
Say use waste heat recovery for district.
Use weight, use.
Heating. Uh.
Heating, not hearing.
Yeah, right, use waste recovery for. What, yeah, I think it, I think what I meant was that. That if they used heat recovery to use, you know, to for benefit of something in the district or nearby uses.
And it should be, it's it says hearing, but it should be. For district heating, yeah. Or nearby uses or.
Or for nearby uses.
Just for nearby uses.
Well, then there's two fours there, because we changed the two to four.
Well, I, so what I have it saying right now is use waste, waste heat recovery for nearby uses.
Okay, that's much more efficient.
Okay.
Is that, is that efficient enough? Efficient?
That's good.
Yeah, that's good.
And did you wanna keep Roman numeral four? It sounded like you weren't interested in having solar or anything like that. Associated.
I I I like, I I think it can be onsite generation, but I I question in the light industrial whether they'd be able to do any significant, you know, so. So even if you have a five thousand square building, if you put solar panels on the roofs, granted, it's not gonna hire, it's not gonna power the entire building, but it's gonna be some. It's gonna be some onsite generation, you know.
Okay.
So I I think. You know, um.
Can you have geothermal?
Possibly.
Way up north here.
Yeah, well, it says green energy sourcing.
Yeah.
Renewable energy.
Use renewable, I was gonna say such as, but but it really is. Yeah.
Quite encouraged.
It's not mandated, you know. But if they want their special use permit.
Yeah.
You wanna pay attention to that section, you know.
So the then then section F, there's all these additional uh special use permit application requirements. Which talks about a narrative, this is the nature of the onsite activities and operations. So in, one of the things they have to submit as part of their legal documents, right, is. Description of a narrative of what they're planning to do with this data center, right? So that gets to your use question, right? Um.
Hey, no, Joe.
I'm not interrupting Tony, but.
I did.
Thank you for being as diligent and conscientious as you are about this. It's impressive. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks for your input, really. Um. The um. Uh, where was I? Oh, additional requirements, yeah, so that, so that, yeah. And and some of these things are fairly standard for businesses that we wanna know, like, you know, how many employees do you have, what? And and some of these things are fairly standard for businesses that we wanna know, like, you know, how many employees do you have, what, how much traffic are they gonna produce, those kinda things, but I think. In addition, I think there's some general questions about, you know, what is the product? Of this. Facility, right? Onsite activities, what's it doing? Uh site plan of the property and location, improvements, flood paths, web lands, streams, and all that stuff, that's pretty standard, right? Yeah, clearly I'm articulating water needs, that's a big one. Cause I think the. One that was proposed was gonna use water. Water recirculating, recirculating water cooling, right? Do we need to say anything about the type of, you know, so. There are multiple ways to cool one of these things, some of these, you know, these. It's just air conditioning, like heat pumps, right, is one way. And you say you've got lots of fans and they make a lot of noise and all that stuff. Quieter version, like air source heat pumps. The quieter version is water source heat pump, which will use water. Some will. Suck water up out of the ground and just discharge it. Some are recirculating, but. Ones that just use water and dump it is probably not what we want, right? Site plan data clearly, like so water needs evaluation, potential impacts of proposed use, both positive and negative. Um emergency services and fire protection. Yeah, cause one of the things uh to understand in a data center is especially if they have large. Lithium batteries for. Emergency power. That can be a significant fire risk.
Uh is there, is there a? Public water in the industrial areas?
The eastern one, the eastern one is in an water sewer district, right?
The nice ones, the nice side is, but across the street is not, right?
Um no, the Nick of Mark facility is also. And actually over in the Henshaw neighborhood is, most of it is public water.
You know, do you think in the future they'll be um providing water that hasn't been treated? You know, the the part of the issue of using these water supplies is that. When they do all the treatment, it makes it more expensive to have it. Do it, but for this cooling, you wouldn't have to do the chlorine and whatever.
But I can't imagine doubling the pipeline system would.
I can, but I mean, you're right, I can't right now, but I can in the future.
Now sewage disposal, some waste, there's a.
So I see water on three. I don't see energy. In this list of six.
Well.
Did I miss it?
The that's up in the. Nice, it's requiring a nice like certification, I believe. Is that off top?
Yeah, that's under two pages.
Yeah. On page six.
Right, but under F, which shows here's the requirements for the special use, it seems to. You're you're not even pointing back to it.
Okay, look at that.
I would include another thing for. Energy maybe point.
And then the narrative description of any environmental impacts. These would come under seeker, right?
Yeah. There'd be areas of. Environmental impact.
Planning board or town board may require submission of key conventionally planned or addressed infrastructure created for the data center, yeah. Well, especially if they do one of these data centers, you know, some data centers are are really. Like shipping containers that are. Draw up, right? And hooked up.
And that's not allowed by this.
That's not allowed by this, right?
Would it be relevant to say? No pilot, no data centers being spoken.
Yeah, that's why then. Uh so backed up in section two and talks about electricity, so there's the electricity water. We can't discharge it anywhere in a waterway. I think most of that stuff is fairly standard. Alright. So. I think. The next steps are, you know, I think we need to do some tweaking here. Redistrict, we can't make a decision tonight anyway, but one thing we can make, I think we can make a decision on. Cause I think. I can just say, well, a public hearing, right? If I wanna do a.
Board can vote to.
Do we need to vote to do a public hearing?
I would think you would want the consensus of the body, yeah.
But you can do it on online.
I can't just call a public hearing.
It seem unusual.
Do you wanna make decisions about exactly, I mean, I've made some changes um as we've talked, but the the policy. Changes, I mean, do you want to, wouldn't you wanna make those decisions before you set a public hearing?
Yeah, probably. So we'll probably have to. Yeah, we'll probably have to adjust those, so we'll make the changes. We can vote on them at the next planning board meeting, right?
Entire board vote on a hearing.
Then to have a public hearing, and we could potentially, well. It's only, the the zag meeting is only a week later, right, so we couldn't really call a public hearing for the zag meeting. That pushes it out again. How how many months are, how many months are we into the eighteen months?
Uh we have until the end of the calendar year. August one, was the March clock is ticking.
Work backwards, because you have to have county planning board review, that's gonna take up some time too. Plus the town board has to do a seeker.
We could actually. So it might be better to just, like. Planning board finish up their stuff on this. If if we just vote and then kick it to the town board to do the public hearing. Is that? I I mean, I don't know, do you think? I mean, I was thinking about having a planning board.
We would have to do it.
I I know, you, the town board, I, we have to do at least in this whole thing, we have to do at least one public hearing, right, so so the. So the, right, but I was considering having the planning board do a public hearing to get some additional feedback. And then. And then make a decision on what to kick to the town board. It it throws it out another month, and it. It. Gets us at risk of going past the moratorium, and I don't wanna do that, so. Uh so I think, I think the next steps then are. Uh Nan, we can sort of. Throw in the things that we talked about, policy changes, whatnot.
Yeah, you know, I've I've written, I think I've got notes about what you've considered, you just have to make the decision about what you want.
And then, so so we'll make those notes, and then at the next planning board meetings, we'll vote on. Whether, you know, such changes to adopt and how we wanna push this forward to the town board. And then, and then that would get on to the. Uh the town board would get it. In October.
Open a hearing then.
And then could open it, you could have the hearing.
Hearing for November.
Yeah, yeah.
Do seeker and. Potential voting in November.
Is that could be time for the for the county piece?
Thirty days for the county.
Time, that would be a month for us. Can you have a public hearing with your planning board?
We could, but but.
It would make, the public would probably like that.
The problem, the the problem with that is, we would have to have the public meeting, have the public hearing and the planning board meeting. And then we'd have to. Sort of synthesize. What comes out of that, whether or not we wanna make any changes, whatever, right, do do those kinda things, then vote on kicking up the town hall, town board meeting.
Then they have to hold a public hearing anyway.
And they have to, and they have to hold a public hearing anyway, so so you're.
But the point is that, like, if the public gets to talk to you before it goes to the town board. Personally, as public, I would feel. That it would be listened to. My experience of public hearings with the town board is that you hold them. People say things. And then the town board just approves what's been presented.
I mean, it may not be true, but I'd swear that's been the pattern.
I'm new here, I haven't.
What what is the, what is the requirement uh for announcing?
Ten days. Ten days. So we would, we we could. Well, not not if we have to vote, see, that's the problem, so I can't vote to have a public hearing tonight, because we don't have a quorum.
If you can vote on, get them online and get a vote done online.
Have to be a public meeting.
What?
Have to be a public meeting. To convene the planning board, they would have to be noticed and.
Why don't you all get together at Hopshire three or more as public meeting?
Yeah, yeah, you can't.
Don't we need three days to announce it?
True. But.
But to get participation one one from that, right?
Well, no, I was thinking three days to say that the planning board is meeting at the Hopshire to decide to have a public hearing.
We can, we can. We can have just the planning board, I mean, we do, the public is invited to the planning board, it doesn't have to be a formal public hearing.
Yeah, you could just have a informal meeting.
We could, we could just have at our planning board meeting, but this could be on the agenda, well, this this, that could be, this is going to be. Uh it, people could just show up and talk, we can let them talk, you know what I mean? So it's not a formal, it's not a formal public hearing, but it's it's letting people have their say.
Getting a lot of input that's changing the policy, and it's not a notice public hearing, so you're welcome to do that. Public comment section.
Yeah, we do have a public comment section, so yeah, so we could, we could.
Advertise.
We could, yes, well, it will be on our agenda and and um.
But, you know, we could open our mouths and advertise it, we can let people know.
So numbers wise for the building and for what's gonna be. Allowed, or do we have some sort of consensus with this group or ideas, or is the planning board gonna have to? Figure out what that's gonna be.
I think the planning board needs to, we need to cover. So we started with five, we're not gonna go over five thousand, I can tell you that, right? I don't, I don't think anybody's advocating that we go over five thousand.
Are we considering under?
But but the suggestion has been made to consider under, so I think, I think we need to have that discussion at the planning board meeting. Is is the number five thousand, is it four thousand? Is it five hundred?
And then what's the?
Personally, I don't think it's five hundred, I'm sorry, Marie, but.
And what's the total maximum allowed? Square footage of.
Right, that's the only one we have to define, is what's that total maximum square footage? In the zone. Right, uh so.
I think that's the more important, you know, whether it's four, twenty five hundred facilities or two. Really doesn't matter.
It's really what's the total within the zone, and I think, I I mean, and we can start with ten thousand as the number, and which would allow two of these facilities at most.
Right, it's the amount of accessory structures.
I'm thinking twenty five hundred, but. That's just a rough, off the top of my head. But but again, that's, what 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 are our thought, I mean, I think as an accessory structure, I think half the size of a. Of a regular data center. Or should it be small?
A lot of computing power.
That is a lot, also, maybe it's a thousand. Yeah, it's a thousand. For accessory structures, maybe it's a thousand, yeah, okay. Well, and again, what what it is, is we need to, we need to come up with a number to discuss, we keep, you and I can't decide to know what those are talking about. But but I think we could certainly make a recommendation. Okay, here's the number we're discussing, and then we go from there.
I'm just trying to think of, like, at the planning board meeting, like, okay, at the zag meeting, these are the kinda numbers that.
These are the kinda numbers.
Kind of considerations.
So so what I would suggest is, in the draft, we keep five thousand. But we will, in the minutes and in the discussion, we will say, it's been suggested that we consider smaller. Four thousand, three thousand, whatever it's thousands.
Or that you just do the total.
Or that we, or that we just do the total in the dip, well, but I don't think we want ten thousand square foot facilities, so. I think it's, you know, maximum in the zone is ten thousand with up with with a single structure being up to. X, whatever that is, right? I hope I'm making sense there. And then. And that, cause you're right, we wanna try to efficiently, efficiently walk through this, but I think the plan then for the planning board meeting would be that. This is on the agenda. We can use that public, I, you know, I always have, we we always have a public comment section at the beginning of a meeting, so we could. Well, nor- normally it's for things that aren't on the agenda, but we could just. Have a public comment section. A public comment period, where people can weigh in, I'm sure. But I, and like I said, people can also send in more emails, I've already received several, right, so.
Are you gonna post it so people can read it?
The emails, yes.
The the draft.
Oh, the draft, yes, uh we can put it on, uh we can put it on the website, yeah, uh yeah, yeah, we can put it on the zag page. Uh or on the planning board, well, or both. The, yes, we will. So once we tweak this, we will put it up on the website, a lot, but, cause we always put up the agenda and any documents. So any site plan reviews, any of those, all those documents are on the website, so so we will do the same thing, so that they're up there, so people can move it. So we can't call a formal public hearing at the next planning board meeting, but. The public can certainly come and talk, right, so. I.
Remind me of the date.
It's it's the fourth Thursday, which is the twenty. So twenty fifth of September. Yeah, these meetings are generally the first Thursday of the planning board. Which is why these end up, in many months, these end up being a week apart, right, it's because they. We got lucky over the summer, there were two of them that were two weeks apart, so. Does that sound like a reasonable plan to people? Cause then the idea is that that we would make a decision at the planning board meeting about. After listening to public input and having discussion, that we would come to some decision about what we wanna send up to the plan, uh to the town board. And then that could get up to the town board. For the October, for their October meetings. I I I think if we don't do that, we're gonna miss the, I think we're gonna miss the.
Well, the deadline's not until the end of the year, so we could pass this in.
Don't take it to the edge, really.
You don't understand our other agenda, if we're doing the budget. We have some.
Does the, does the moratorium officially end like December thirty first, or?
July one, August one, summertime.
So. Well, but. We, if we get it up to the town board in October. Then they can make a decision about when they take it up and how they handle it to meet the moratorium, cause then it's not our problem.
My feeling right now, I'll I'll talk to my colleagues, that we all wanna really be focused on.
So what happens on the beginning of January, so something's, the guarantee waiting.
What happens?
Is over, so somebody could, to see if they can get an application in and, you know, try and, you know. Do a project missions. In our backyard.
We have no reports, cause it won't be on the.
Anyways, this has been a really good discussion, I appreciate.
Contains somewhere from every committee, or just those that are kinda?
No, so so. Tonight, we have, we had a few people here that are not officially part of the zag. But the official zaghers includes at least one person. But the official ZAGgers includes at least one person from each of the.
That's a good way of getting out the word that there was gonna be a public comment.
So, does everybody who is officially a ZAG number? You guys are, right? And Janice is, but. If we're, the plan, we're, we're gonna put this up on the website and all that, but you guys can announce it in your groups and you can get the word out, right? And most of them, so. Plus, it's all gonna be. Public, and you know.
No advertisers, it's going out, right, right.
But but it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be announced as a public hearing, but the the fact is, this is on the agenda.
Yeah, and this is the opportunity to to speak to the board.
It is an opportunity, cause there will be a, the town board is going to have to do a public.
Right, but we are all experienced with town board.
So Tony, can we? As a planning group. Meet in advance and decide what we're gonna decide, and then just to represent what these people thought was. Or just, you know, just like the town board does.
Oh, stop.
I knew, but we, oh yes, it's one step ahead, you feel like you're gonna be here, we haven't experienced.
The answer is no.
Okay, the resolution was introduced, was adopted. July eighteen.
For eighteen months.
So it's in. Goes in fact when the Secretary of State files it, so it's probably around August one.
So it was August one. Then we have till February, right, so we got a little more time, okay.
So we could have a planning board come with me here.
Let's make sure we succeed in beating the moratorium.
I I I think, I I, I mean, aside from having a an official public hearing, I think, I think if we can get the word out and.
Yeah.
Let people know. What the agenda is, I think, you know, having people show up at the planning board meeting and we'll give them an opportunity to talk.
Be so awful when people can actually come.
I expect I will see, I I I expect we will see all of you, right?
And so I'm pretty sure there's a couple people on the town board that listen.
Well, they listen, they just don't change it.
Yes, we are adjourned, we are officially adjourned. Thank you, man.
Alright, so what I'll do is, um, I I made the little tweaks. I'll send you that updated file and then you let me know, you know, what other policies change you want.
Okay. That sounds good, man.
Okay.
Thank you. Spent a lot of discussion.
Yeah, no, it was good discussion, yeah, very good. Alright, yeah.